To order, Mr. Clerk, do we have a form?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have six present.
We rise by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for attending this evening and for everyone watching at home. The first item on the agenda this evening is to approve the agenda. I'll just make note of the addendums that were sent out today that you should have found in front of you, board members. This adds a few consent agenda items of some positions that were just recently filled in this past week and so have been added. And then, in other matters, it's really changing how other matters, Item B, reads, and I'll explain that as we get there. So those two items are addendums to the agenda. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve any discussion on this. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Item Three, recognitions and awards. This evening, we do not have any. Is that correct?
Other than her birthday, no.
There's this very special birthday today, and she would appreciate it if we moved the meeting along, so. Well, think about singing happy birthday later on.
You can sing happy birthday.
You cannot lie on a public work.
Next item on the agenda, community comment. This is a time for members of the community to come forward and address the board on any comments or concerns they would like to make. There's a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. Any comments, community comments at this time, please?
I'm Janet Mitchell. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors at Riverbend Nature Center, as a volunteer naturalist who has had the pleasure of working with Fairbo students at Riverbend for the past 12 years, and a retired public school teacher. Your district's link with Riverbend has been the envy of many schools all over the country. A science program integrated with outdoor experience is rare and wonderful. In a time when so many students have virtually no time outside, your program at Riverbend provided them with delight as well as knowledge. I would like to cite the work of Scott Russell Sanders, a thoughtful commentator on environmental issues. He writes, "Whatever else we teach our children, we owe them an ecological education. We need to give them time outdoors where they can meet and savor the world that humans have not made: pill bugs on the sidewalk, tadpoles in a puddle, a sky aflame with sunset, a kiss of wind." Such contact gives promise of a lifelong joy in the presence of nature. Children who have received an ecological education know that the well-being of people depends on the well-being of the earth, for the neighborhood, for the watershed, and for the planet. We fervently hope you will see your way clear to reinstating this valuable program. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Any other comments at this time? Okay, well, seeing none, we move along in the agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. So I, as we get started here, we need to ask if anyone has any items to pull out. I'm going to start by suggesting that we pull out the request for leave of absence from Heather Stanga, and I'll discuss why in just a moment. Are there any other requests? We move into the consent agenda. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Of a motion and a second to approve. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
I vote aye. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robishow?
Aye.
And President Ingraham.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is six zero.
Okay, so I want to explain why I pulled out this request for a leave of absence. The administration is asking at this time that we not grant this leave of absence. Apparently, this employee does not, in fact, qualify for a leave of absence, so it's at our discretion to choose to do it. She's requesting a leave of absence in order to be free to teach at the...
Your strength.
At your strength. And so, Nicole, if you want to tell us a little bit about what the rules are and when we have discretion and when we don't have discretion on these requests?
Excuse me. Teachers have the option to request an extended leave of absence. Under Minnesota statutes, there's two different types of requests. One would be an extended statutory leave of absence, which is generally a three- to five-year leave of absence. And in order to be eligible for that leave, they have to have worked in the state of Minnesota as a teacher for 10 years or more. Five of those years must be with us, with Fairbo Public Schools. This type of leave that Ms. Stanga is requesting is a charter school leave of absence. Now, the charter school statute is separate from the Minnesota Extended Leave of Absence statute. However, the charter school leave request, or the charter school statute, refers back to the Minnesota Extended Leave of Absence statute, which has the same eligibility requirements of having to work in a Minnesota school for 10 years as a teacher, and five which have to be with us. In Ms. Stanga's case, she has not worked for 10 years in the state of Minnesota. She's worked for a total of five years that have all been with us, so she doesn't meet those eligibility requirements as far as her years of service within the state of Minnesota. So the discretion is up to the board as far as whether or not you would approve the request or not approve the request.
So that's the situation. It's up to the board, I think, to decide whether or not we want to approve this particular leave of absence. So I'll open the floor to discussion on this. Actually, before I do this, if I could just clarify, do we need to take an action on this item? We need to vote on it?
You do.
We can't just not vote on it?
Yeah, you do to vote.
Okay. So, any discussion on this item?
Do we have any precedent set?
You know, the last time we did these charter school leaves was quite a few years ago, so I'm not, really not well enough informed to speak to it. It was quite a few years ago when we had our first group of teachers leave and go to a near-shan when they first separated from us. And in that case, we did. I'm not sure of the history of those staff members, if they were eligible for it or not. That was probably about 12 to 15 years ago.
Did we lose some teachers to STEM, too?
We did.
You don't know what the default of law order?
We did lose one teacher to STEM who was on a charter school leave of absence, and she was eligible for the leave. She met the eligibility requirements.
Any further discussion? So, I'll entertain a motion, either to approve or to not approve, as the motion maker would like.
Well, introduce a motion to approve her leave of absence.
So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, so to be clear, I think that in favor vote means that the leave of absence will be approved, and a no vote will mean that the leave of absence is not approved. Any further discussion on this item?
I'd like to be clear about if this leave were approved, what rights would the employee have returning to the district? That's an important question.
Sure. So if her leave is approved, she has the right to come back to us within the next five years. And basically, what she would need to do is inform us by February 1st of the prior year in which she plans to return.
Just one comment, too, is that this would be precedent-setting if you do approve this leave.
So we would be, if this leave were to be approved, we would be exceed, I'm not sure if I'm using the correct word, but exceeding the guidelines for...
Set by statute, yep.
Set by statute. So we'd be having a more generous than the statute demands, not that other...
Yep, that's correct.
Question, Mr. Clerk. When you say she can return to the district, she has to be, there has to be a position for which she's qualified. She cannot come and bump somebody who's incumbent in that position, right? There has to be a position for which she's qualified or a comparable position. It's not necessarily the position she's vacating.
Right, that's correct. So basically, she would come back into any position in which, either if we have a vacancy and if we, for some reason, do not have any vacancies for any given year, then she would displace a person that has less seniority than her.
So she would be able to bump after five years on somebody out there?
During the five-year period, she would have the right to displace another employee, if that was the situation?
Is she not full-time for us? Because, I mean, she makes a comment about a full-time position there.
She's not full-time for us.
Just one more clarification. Tom, your comment is, "We may be exceeding the timeframe, but we're not exceeding the statute," because the statute apparently gives the board the...
Oh, yes, I understand. Yes, thank you. But that was my, the intent of my question is that we were being more generous than the timeframe, but we do have that discretion, yes.
Any further discussion?
But just to make it clear, I think if the board approved this, then you set a past practice for others who want to do the same thing to enter this in agreement, and it's pretty tough for you to deny that request.
I would also say, to be clear, I think it's the recommendation of the administration that this not be approved. Mr. Sesker, please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That's what we're recommending.
That's the recommendation.
We're suggesting. I never recommend. I would like you to consider that. How's that?
She's a part-time. Can she get a full-time within her district, or there's no room for her?
She potentially could, sure. Right now, she's a Title I teacher for us, and none of our, excuse me, we only have one full-time Title I teacher, and the rest of them are all part-time.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, Mr. Clerk, if you would please do a roll call.
I'm going to vote no, Tom Casper.
No.
Deb Davis?
No.
Richard Olson?
Yeah.
Jerry Robishow?
Yes.
And President Ingraham?
No.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is four in favor, two against.
Okay, thank you.
Just a second. He said that backwards, didn't he?
Four, or four against, four against, and two in favor, thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next on the agenda is a curriculum committee report from Colleen.
Good evening. Our curriculum committee meeting was just held this evening. We had a discussion about the digital learning plan. We talked about, obviously, the professional development, the data technician, and the idea of an operation levy, and pretty much shared with the curriculum committee basically what our teachers are proposing. So we have several proposals, and we wanted to make sure that we shared with them what our teachers intended to use the technology for and how they intended to integrate it in the curriculum and put it into the hands of students. After reviewing that plan, we did a vote as to whether or not the curriculum committee would recommend this plan, and it was unanimous. They did vote that this is a plan that they would like to see in the future approved. Tom, would you like to add anything as part of our committee, so I always add something?
No, it was a very interesting discussion. It's some slightly additional information than we had heard at our work session last week, and it's interesting to watch this evolve, and I certainly recognize Mr. Sesker's point is that looking for encourage, maybe not encouragement, but some support from the board in order to continue the process, because it is a very demanding process to come up with this kind of plan, so.
It was a great committee, it was a great meeting, and a pretty exciting plan, so are there questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, policy, policy committee report.
There's nobody here that was there except Tom.
I was there. I was there.
Just Tom.
Kathy was there, too.
Colleen was there.
Yeah. It was a good meeting, and, yeah, of course, Vette was there, and we went through the following policies. The big one was the use of school facilities and equipment, and thanks to, thank you again to Anne Marie and Colleen and Kevin for all your hard work, and Ken Hubert on the facilities, policy, and procedures. And I think we finally have something in place that everybody agrees on, so I, that's the, the other ones are minor changes throughout the whole policies, some tweaking from MSBA, but the big one was the use of school facilities and equipment, so thank you very much for helping out.
Thank you. So then, Item 7B, is to consider the introduction of policy, policies for first reading. I'll go through these. This is Policy 524, Technology Acceptable Use Policy. Policy 902, Use of School Facilities and Equipment. Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. Policy 515, Form for Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. Policy 413, Harassment and Violence. Policy 401, Equal Employment to Opportunity. To remind everyone, these are here in front of us this evening as a first reading. They will come back to us next month as a second reading, but they are open for discussion at this time, and I'm sure the policy committee would appreciate any feedback that we have on them. So I'll open the floor to any questions or discussion on these items.
These mostly updates and wording?
They are, except for the use of school facilities and equipment. The other ones are all, I think, yeah, they were all wording and...
The technology, Maria did say.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The technology was, if you read through the technology, Maria did a great job on that. Sorry, Maria, I forgot to recognize you on that. And that went through a committee process, too, with a lot of feedback, a lot of comparisons with various other technology policies, so it's very, it's good, it's very good.
Any further questions or comments? Should I give this in time, or should we move on with the agenda? All right. Hearing no comments at this time, we move along in the agenda to Item Eight, Finance. Beginning with Item 8A, the Finance Committee Report. Who's going to carry that out first?
I will. We had a very full meeting. Colleen did a wonderful job on keeping us moving forward after a small little glitch, but we did make it through everything. There's quite a few things coming up that we need to vote on, and everything was unanimous from the committee, so made it much easier that way. Otherwise, that's about it.
Okay. Any questions for Steem Treger?
Oh, I did, we did add a meeting in July.
Okay. All right, hearing none, we will then move on to the many items under Finance that we'll examine. Item 8B1, fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget, Colleen.
Good evening. We're going to actually do Item 1 and Item 2 at the same time, if that's okay, because they just roll one right into the other. And if you'll refer to the PowerPoint handout that you have in your packets, you actually have two handouts. One is a PowerPoint, the other is a booklet, and I won't go through the booklet. We did that at the Finance Committee. That's a lot more detail than we need to see tonight, but it will be on the website, so for people who want more detail, they can just go on the website, and at the end of the PowerPoint, there is our directions to get to that. Okay, so starting with the first page, what we're going to talk about tonight are the funds accounted for in our district, a little bit of our enrollment history and projections, our final budget for '12, '13, and then our budget assumptions going into the next school year, '13, '14, and then our adopted budget for '13, '14. The school board is required to approve a final budget for the current school year and adopt a budget for the next school year in June, so that's what our purpose here tonight is to do. Okay, on the next slide, the funds that we have in our district. We have the General Fund, Food Service Fund, Community Service Fund, Building Construction Fund, or Capital Projects Fund, Debt Service Fund, and the Trust Fund, and we'll talk a little bit about what each of those do. On the next slide, the General Fund really accounts for our main goal. It accounts for all the K-12 educational activities, co-curricular, extracurricular, or instructional and student support programs, our superintendent cost, district administration, operations and maintenance, transportation, capital expenditures. So it is the largest fund in our district and in most districts. We have actually 10 restricted accounts. That's money that we get in for a specific purpose that has to be spent on a specific purpose. We have one committed account, one non-spendable account, and one unassigned account, and that is the largest. The unassigned is the largest fund in our General Fund. That's the one we're always most concerned about, because that funds most of the day-to-day operations. On the next slide, we talked about the Food Service Fund. This fund takes care of all the financial activities of our food service program, so all of our preparation and service of our breakfast and lunch meals, snacks, milk, all of that flows through the Food Service Fund. It also can fund the equipment needs of the kitchens if we have any. And that is a restricted fund, so any money we get in for food service has to stay in that fund and be spent only on food service. It can't be used to fund general fund activities for the most part. On the next page, and I forgot to tell you, if you have any questions, just stop me at any time. The Community Service Fund takes care of all of our enrichment programs for any age level that are not part of the regular K-12 education program. The Community Service Fund has five components, each with its own fund balance, so early childhood family education, school readiness, adult basic education, community service, which includes preschool screening, non-public pupil aids, and community education, which includes adults with disabilities, school-age care, youth development, youth services. We also have a federal 21st century grant that runs through community service, and that funds some after-school educational programming also. On the next page, the Building Construction Fund, or the Capital Projects Fund. This is a temporary fund that's used to record all the operations of a construction program that's funded by the sale of bonds. So you remember, a few years ago, we passed a $15 million bond issue to do some updates on all of our facilities and our grounds. That's where this money gets placed, because it can only be used for those projects, and then we continue to spend it down till the projects are all done. And the Debt Service Fund on the next page. This is where we record all the revenues and expenditures for outstanding bonded indebtedness, so think of this like your mortgage. It's like our mortgage on our buildings, on the money that we've borrowed to either build the properties or to remodel the properties. We levy for these payments. We levy a little bit higher than what we need to make the payments. In case there are high tax delinquencies, we can still make our bond payments. So this fund grows over time, but as it gets to be too high, that money is given back to the taxpayers in the form of a levy reduction. And then lastly, on the next page, the Trust Fund. This is where we record any scholarships that are given to the district, and these can be either expendable or non-expendable. Right now, they're pretty much expendable. We take money in, and we give it back out in the form of scholarships. It's only two or three. It's a very small number. Most of those scholarships run through the Falcon Trust. That's kind of a basic on funds in the school district. Any questions on that? Okay, let's move on to the next page. What you have here is our enrollment history for the last 10 or so years, and you'll see that 10 years ago, in '03, '04, we had little over 4,000 kids in the district. And this year, we are averaging about 3,860. We're projecting about that same amount for next year. So we've been really quite stable for the last 10 years. If we think about, if you look at '08, '09, to '09, '10, to '10, '11, that's when the Cannon River STEM School opened up, so some of the kids left our system for that. They currently have about 250 kids at STEM School. So if you were to add that to the 3,860, we'd actually have a little bit of growth in enrollment. So our community's been very fortunate to hold its own with the number of students we have here. On the next page, then, we'll start looking at a series of slides where we're going to go through fund by fund and look at the beginning fund balance, the revenues and expenditures for each year, and the ending fund balance, and this is for the current school year. So I won't read through the numbers, you can read through those, but I might just make a few comments about what's happening.
Colleen, I'm sorry, I should have, if you go back to enrollment...
Sure.
And I'm not asking for, you know, if you take a look at our enrollment, the demographics of that enrollment have significantly changed over the last 10 years as well.
Absolutely.
So it isn't just that we have a stable enrollment. Basically, what's happening in that enrollment has a significant impact on our district.
Yes, we've got changing enrollment demographics. Even though it's been stable, we've had very much a changing demographic.
I'm sorry, I should have asked that earlier. I apologize.
That's okay. And I do, if anybody wants information on that, I've got information on those statistics, too, so. Okay, back to the next slide, then, on the General Fund for this year. We are deficit spending about a little under $2 million, and there are several reasons for that. This includes all the funds, remember. So Health and Safety has a deficit of about $200,000, or playing some catch-up there with some levy. That's all levy revenue, so that is just playing some catch-up with that. This also includes the Fitness Center, and if you remember, we had about $400,000 on the books last year that was donated for the Fitness Center as it was being built, so that's all spent. Our, part of our budget solution was to spend $550,000 out of our separation and severance account. We also funded $225,000 of wireless that was a one-time cost, and then we had cuts that weren't implemented, other cuts that weren't implemented, of about $350,000, so that explains all of that. Most of those will be one-time issues. Our fund balance was at 18 percent. This'll drop it down to about 14.8, just a little under 15, so I think we're still in good shape. The other thing that I want to just mention briefly, because I know it was a concern of the board, when we invested in the Human Resources Director position, one of the things that we said is that it would continue to decrease our legal fees, and we are continuing to see that in '11, our fees were quite high, about $83,000. In fiscal '12, they were $14,000, and this year, we're just a little over $12,000. So that was a really good investment. On the next page, our Food Service Fund is pretty much balanced, just a little bit of a deficit there. Again, we're probably projecting expenditures a little bit high and revenues a little bit lower, so no concerns about that fund. Our Community Service Fund. This fund balance is also dropping by about $160,000. Most of that is due to the Adult Basic Education Program that is, they're spending down about $100,000 of their fund balance. School readiness is also spending down about $65,000. There, they've got some deficit issues that we need to work out. The Community Education Fund is actually going up by about $6,000. So this fund that, when we changed over from having the city to our Community Education Director to having an internal hire, that turned out to be a very good move for us, not only programmatically, but financially, we're making everything work.
I'd just like to add a little bit there.
Sure.
From what I see in the Community Services, that's really been a bright star, a decision we made, and I don't know how much the committee is aware, but we've gotten significant grants because we've got a person working on it now, Anne Marie, and I think we've done some restructuring and improved some efficiencies that we had staffing.
Right.
And I think we've got a vision that's starting to be met. We've increased our offerings, and I think we've improved our work with the targeted students.
Yeah. And I think STEAM, if you saw the article in the... Yeah. And I think STEAM, if you saw the article in the paper on the STEAM Summer Program, that's very much indicative of the good things that are happening.
Yeah, the collaboration is another one with the other organizations.
Right.
Uh, in the county. I think that's been tremendous.
So I'd like to second Mr. Bodie's comments. Over the past year, it's been very gratifying to hear and learn more about, uh, our community at program and how it's, uh, I think really, uh, taking off and, and doing the kinds of things that we would hope it would do. And, and that seems to be coming to fruition. And congratulations to our leadership. And I think it was a, a good, a good move. And over, over time, it's proving to be an excellent move.
Yeah, thank you.
We're looking forward to more activities and training for the older folks.
They're always, they're always open to suggestions, so. If there's anything you wanna see, just give them a. Okay, our Building Construction Fund, you can see that that's almost spent down. That should all be gone by the end of this next year. Finally, in the Debt Service Fund, you can see that that fund balance had some carryover of refunding bonds. That's why the beginning balance was so high. But typically, that fund balance is around nine-hundred thousand. And then the next slide shows the Trust Fund. Again, you can see that's very small. We don't have a lot of money really running through that. Okay, so that's all the detail and the numbers. The next slide shows you a picture of the funds. You can see that the General Fund really represents the lion's share of what we do, seventy-one percent. So we'll take a look at the General Fund on the next slide in a couple of different ways. The first one is revenues by source. You can see that the state provides about eighty-two percent of our revenue. Federal, five percent. Local property taxes, eight percent, and other local five. So highly dependent on the state revenue for what we do.
I'd just like to, to second those words. There was a report in the paper that I thought was erroneous here after our meeting, uh, that indicated that most of our funding was local. It is truly from the state.
Right.
I mean, obviously, taxpayers, but, uh, um, I've always felt that the, um, the property tax is the most regressive of taxes. And since that's the only local source the district has access to, I'd like to minimize that impact as much as possible while still providing a comprehensive program. But state is the primary source of our funding.
That's right. We're highly dependent on what happens in St. Paul.
Yes.
On the next page, just to look at the expenditures in the General Fund by object code. So you can see that seventy-eight percent of what we spend our money on is salaries and benefits. That's to be expected. We're a, a labor-intensive business. We educate students. And then you can see the other areas there. Purchase services, really is transportation utilities, consultants, that kind of thing, and then supplies. Okay, starting on the next page, I'll highlight just a few of our budget assumptions. For our revenue in the General Fund, our formula allowance will go up seventy-eight dollars. Our medical assistance revenue is increasing by seven-five thousand. Our compensatory revenue saw the biggest increase, six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Our literacy incentive aid is estimated to be the same. Our state special education aid will increase by about a hundred-and-fifty thousand. And then we're in the third year now of our operating levy referendum of three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. On the next page, just a few of our expenditure budget assumptions. We have budget reductions of about eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand factored into the budget. Remember, we had original cuts of one-point-seven million, but we adjusted those with the additional revenue that came from the legislative session. Our health insurance rates will increase by ten-and-a-half percent. Our property and liability is projected to increase by twenty percent. This was done before we got our last quote in, so that came down a little bit. Our workers' compensation insurance will actually decrease by a little over seven percent. And then salary and fringe benefits are based on contractual language for settled contracts for those that are still open. We factored in an appropriate increase. And lastly, cash flow borrowing costs have been taken out of the budget due to the improved cash flow from the state of Minnesota. So we no longer have to borrow money to pay our bills. Okay, on the next page, just a couple of Food Service assumptions. The federal meal reimbursement rates will remain the same. The state will increase a half a cent per meal. We will increase our per-meal charges for lunch by ten cents. And then Sedexo will continue to be our food service provider.
I'd like to restate something here as a point of information for primarily the audience at home and the audience here is that the increase in per-meal charges, I understand it is something that is being, that's mandated that we do. It's not something that we're choosing to do and, and would frankly choose not to do if it were within our power. But we are required to make this change.
That's correct. Every year, we're required to run it through a calculator and make sure that we're charging the appropriate amount. On the Community Service Fund budget assumptions, our program fees will be based on our projected program costs. The Community Service Fund, like the Food Service Fund, is meant to pretty much break even. The fees should cover the costs. The Twenty-First Century Federal Grant, we will continue with that for one more year. That's about two-hundred-and-ten thousand. And then the district will continue to levy for the youth services, after-school enrichment, home visiting disabled adults, and disabled school age care. Okay, on the next slide, the Building Construction budget assumptions. The deferred maintenance projects are mostly complete. We're just finishing up some punch lists on projects. We do have one small project, I think about a forty-thousand-dollar lock project throughout the building, locks on the doors. And so this fund, we expect to be zeroed out at the end of next year. Our Debt Service Fund budget assumptions, again, levies are based on a hundred-and-five percent of the debt payments and the expenditures are based on the bond payment schedule. Okay, so then you'll see the next five or six or so slides again show the five fund, the beginning projected fund balance, the revenues, expenditures, and the ending fund balance. So for the General Fund, we do have a deficit next year of about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That, two things are made up here. Uh, one-time curriculum expenses of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and then one-time spending of about four-hundred thousand. When we talked about the legislative and the revenue increases, most of those revenue increases are coming in, in the second year of the biennium, in fourteen, fifteen. So rather than cut programs for a year and then bring them back, the Board has decided to keep those programs for one year. And because we do have a healthy fund balance, we can afford to cover that for a year. So our projected fund balance at the end of thirteen, fourteen would be about twelve-point-two percent. Remember, our policy is a minimum of nine-and-a-half. So we'll still be very financially sound.
Colleen, just a quick question. Is that the unassigned?
Unassigned, yes.
Unassigned, okay.
Yes. The one that the fund balance policy refers to. Is it Food Service Fund? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'd like this televised opportunity to, to make sure that we're helping our community understand the situation despite the fact that we have had some increase in, uh, state funding that has allowed us to add back some of our previously approved cuts. We do remain having cut eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, if I'm reading.
That's correct.
So there are a number of, primarily teaching positions that, uh, we had last year that we will not have next year.
That's correct.
So.
You're right. Even though the funding was, was very good, it was not enough to bring back everything we cut, much less talk about enhancing it, our budget look.
Right, because I, I, I wanna applaud the state and, and our, our good fortune at being able to bring back as much as we were able to bring back. But I'd like to remember that we have, uh, made some significant cuts in programming and staffing. And, uh, those remain gone until such time, perhaps in the future, that funding improves to a degree that we can bring back what we've had this year.
That's correct. Yes. Okay, in the Food Service Fund, we're projecting a little bit of a deficit spending there. I think that, um, we're being very conservative on our revenues and a little bit, uh, conservative on our expenditures too. I think we'll end up actually with a balanced budget when we get all done with that. Um, Community Service, we're projecting pretty much a break-even. All programs are really pretty much balanced. The budget's balanced for next year in all areas. On Building Construction Fund, you can see that we're again anticipating that that will zero out at the end of next year. All those projects should be done. Debt Service Fund, very similar to what we've seen in any other year. Again, right around that million-dollar mark. If that gets to be too high, which it probably is, there will be a credit to the taxpayers through the levy process. So we'll see a little bit of reduction in that levy in the Debt Service Fund. Trust Fund, not too much change there for thirteen, fourteen. It's pretty much the same as what we have any other year. Okay, the next page then, you'll see the very same graphs you saw before, only for this fiscal year. And we're pretty consistent, not much changes. So it maybe changes a percent or two, but not really very much. So again, the General Fund represents the lion's share of what we do, eighty-two percent. And if you look at the next page, our revenues, I think they were at eighty-two. Now they're at eighty-three percent. So they went up just a percent. Federal remains very low at five, and local tax levies, again, very low at eight percent. On the next slide, you do again see the expenditures by what we call an object code. So salaries and benefits, seventy-nine percent of what we do, purchase services, fourteen, and so on. That's pretty much it. Any questions on anything? I know we've covered a lot of detail in the other packets at prior work sessions, so you've gotten a lot of information up to this point.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, but just a comment. Um, I have sat through, I don't know how many hundreds and hundreds of budget presentations on school budget. And I'd like to commend you, Colleen, for taking a very complex system and reducing it to very understandable language that I think the public understands. I think we as board members, uh, have a good grasp of what's going on. So I know that, um, there are pages and pages that you go through to get this material in understandable language. So I appreciate, um, your opportunity to present to us in a, in a understandable language. And that has not always been the case in other budget presentations I've listened to.
Well, thank you very much. I try. It's a tough thing to get across. I know, because it's very complicated, so.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other questions for Colleen?
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. All right, after that presentation, the Board has two items of action that we need to consider. One is to finalize the budget for twenty-twelve, thirteen that we've just gone through. Um, and one is to adopt the budget, uh, for twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen at this current time. So, uh, with that, I have a chairable entertaining motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen final budget.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next is the fiscal year twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, uh, adopted budget. So this is our, our best sense of the budget at this time. To allow the community and to clarify for the board members, there are a number of things that are in this budget that are still to be determined. For instance, uh, contractual settlements. Uh, we have a number in there as an estimate of what that might be, but that is not settled. And that could certainly affect this budget as could some other things as the year goes on. But this is our, our, um, our, our, uh, the adopted budget that we have at this time, so. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you all very much. Um, next, let me get caught up here in my, uh, on my agenda. Uh, next is student accident, uh, insurance. Uh, does somebody, I don't know if Colleen or Todd wants to just say a couple of words about what this is?
Um, it's, this is a, uh, insurance policy that students have a chance to add more insurance for them. Uh, you think of an athletic event or a sport. Uh, kids have a chance to go home and ask for additional coverage for their insurance. Maybe their insurance doesn't cover, so.
It's not a requirement, but it is something students, it's an offer to students if.
That's correct. That's all it is.
If they finally choose to do so.
This is not a district expense. Students pay for it.
That's correct. Yep.
And we've done this every year. This is a, you know. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Item number four, workers' compensation insurance and property and liability insurance quotes. A few words about that, Mr. Sisker.
Well, you can see what the quotes are. Um, and certainly you can ask Colleen if you have any questions about that. The, just wanna make sure we get the right one, because Grant came with another proposal. Do you wanna just cover that real quick, just to explain that, that piece? I just wanna make sure you're understanding what happened.
We've seen, or we're aware that rates were going to go up. So every time, pretty much every year now, we do quotes because that spends kind of a volatile market. But you can see there that we did get three property quotes. We'll talk about that first from Indiana, CWG and Selective. And Selective was the one that he had just got in the morning of the Finance Committee meeting. So Selective came in at a total premium of a hundred-and-forty-three thousand, twenty-four dollars. Our premium last year was a hundred-and-eighteen through Indiana, so it is an increase. And unfortunately, it, it seems to be industry-wide, and it's not just us. We didn't have any claims. We had nothing going on with our experience. So it's just unfortunate that, that's just where the market's at right now. So we're recommending Selective. The good news is that under our workers' comp, we did get a good quote from a different company, RAS. They dropped, it's about sixteen thousand lower than what we were paying this year. So that was a drop of seven, a little over seven percent. So good news and bad news. So we're recommending Selective and RAS for those two insurances.
So I'll entertain a, a motion, um, Colleen, perhaps you can, uh, for Selective for property and liability insurance? And RAS for workers' compensation insurance? Do I have that right?
Selective would be the property inland marine, all the different insurance.
Right.
Pieces that you have there. Yep.
Right, so.
And it's.
Go through, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to choose Selective for property, inland marine, crime, general liability, DNO, auto, umbrella, terrorism, abuse, molestation, uh, um, all adding up to a hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. And, uh, RAS for workers' comp at two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. That was a request for a motion. I might've gotten lost if we.
Uh, well, I'll honor your request. Somewhere in there.
A motion and a second to approve, uh, to accept the, uh, quotes as described. Any further discussion?
This is just a question. I find it interesting that, uh, I assume these were RFPs or some kind of quote request? And Indiana includes terrorism, but the others two did not. Are we subject to terrorism and terrible? And I, I found it interesting that the other two did not have it in the issue. But then one has the abuse, molestation, and two don't. I guess insurance agents will think differently or something.
Any further questions or comments? We have a motion, a second, if I remember correctly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the ICE Arena Agreement. Uh, this is an agreement between, uh, the ICE Arena and the school district to purchase, um, a number of hours with the, uh, with the ICE Arena each year. Uh, this is the same as each year. I'm not sure that anything has changed here.
Minimal increase in the charge.
Some small increase. I think on the ICE Arena, we discussed a small increase. I should note that, uh, it still seems that our ICE Arena is charging less for ICE than any of the surrounding ICE Rovers. So I think we're still getting a great deal out of that. I mean.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the ICE Arena Agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is, uh, an, uh, agreement with Clifton Larson Allen for the audit engagement letter. Is that, uh, this is the contract for our audit. Is that correct, Colleen? Okay, so this is the contract for, um, uh, to pay for our audit that we are required to do by law each year.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up are the Nurstran Agreements. We have a number of agreements between the Faribault Public Schools and Nurstran Elementary to provide a a number of services to them that they pay us to provide. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
All of them?
Yes, I think we can do it, just one more.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve all of these agreements with Nurstran.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve these agreements, I should read what these are. This is the lease for their building, for their custodial services, for their food services, and for some technology support services.
Yep, and these are services that we provide to them.
We're providing to them, they pay us for, we've been doing this for for many years.
We reviewed all of these at a finance meeting and it's all within reason, so it was our recommendation.
Did I ask for a motion and a second today? Okay, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the MA Billing Consultant, this is somebody, an expert who helps us with our MA billing, which those of us who have been watching this has increased greatly over the the last few years with that expertise. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is migrant Head Start. Todd, I don't know if you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, this is a program, and certainly, I was looking to see if Cheryl was here to explain the program. And I don't know, Colleen, do you want to explain the contract a little bit more in detail how it works? It's pretty much, it's something that we've had for many times, it's an Elysian, Elysian, sorry. Go ahead. Their learning center and this contract that we've had for
The area has a lot of migrant workers that come in during the summer and so, in an effort to make sure that those kids are getting education. The Elysian area, Waterville, Elysian, Moorestown area provides educational services to those kids, so what they do is they contact with each of the school districts around them to help with identifying and testing some of the students to identify their needs, so it doesn't really cost us anything but staff time to help them out with that. That's basically what it is, the agreement to help them identify the needs of kids.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Rice County Family Services Collaborative Agreement.
We get, we we get some money from Rice, Rice County Family Services Collaborative, we do these time studies where we ask various questions of our staff and in turn it generates federal dollars to the service collaborative. We use our money to help fund some of the social workers in our elementary schools, so we're recommending approval.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Up next is a Northfield B two-point-eleven facilitator. I'm not sure what that is, so.
Yeah, this is another collaborative, I'm gonna need a little help on this one too, Colleen. We're working on all these contracts, I can't keep it straight.
This is what they used to call the old IEIC, if you remember that acronym, anyway. The B dash two-point-one-one is actually birth to three. So if you're under three, you're born enough to age three, you can get some early services.
You're getting in trouble for not knowing what that is when I get home.
Worded funny, I know, yeah.
Do we just keep that between us?
Uh-uh, it's already getting text. These are federal funds that are used for those services and the best way to do that, of course, is to coordinate that with somebody else, you get the best bang for your buck, so Northfield and Faribault share that position, and so this person is serving both districts in that birth-to-three area of identifying, again, kids' needs and services, so this is just a purchase of service agreement between Northfield and us so that we can build Northfield for half that position or whatever hours they use.
Any, do we have a motion and a second? I don't know, so I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve at this time.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Review of the health and safety policy and fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen budget.
This was the old, I don't know if you remember the old attachment ninety-nine that used to be a list of different items that you had to cost out. They've really simplified it, so now it's just a policy and a review of what our health and safety items are. So it's a standard for us to qualify for health and safety funds.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approv- approve the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen health and safety budget. Any further discussion?
I don't believe this was through the finance committee, was it? Was it?
Yeah.
Of these figures, oh, okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, the refuse and recycling bids. I assume we have a number of bids in front of us? And we have a recommendation to approve a bid from Waste Management for one hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all. Next up, the HVAC Service Contract. We switched to Pape, Poppy, sorry, I said that wrong, Poppy, a few years ago. And we have a new contract to approve from them. I'll entertain a motion and a second on this?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And finally, a remodel of the Lincoln Kitchen to approve, I think we need to approve the bid here for MetCon for eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve.
Sold.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion on this item?
Will this be done before school starts, right?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all, that was a long list and I appreciate your work, helping us get through that quickly. Next up is item eight C, the budget. We have an enrollment report, excuse me, I need to get to the right place. An enrollment report. Colleen, do you want to say something about how our final numbers came in?
Yes, okay, so you can see in the June column, we had a total of three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen students. And we're running an average from October through June, we're averaging now at three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven. And if you compare that to the column where it says projected June twenty twelve, a year ago, we projected our enrollment to be thirty-eight, sixty, so we're just shy of three kids, but this is low because it doesn't include the targeted services additional revenue that we get, so I fully expect that that number will be probably about ten higher than that, maybe thirty-eight, seventy or so. So we're right where we expected we would be. The last two columns I added just so you can see what is going on with change in legislation. They changed how our pupil units, which is what the PU stands for, is being calculated, starting in fourteen, fifteen, so not next year, but the year after. And in the second to last column, if I were to take the main numbers and convert them to pupil units, weight them the way the law currently states, we'd have four thousand, four hundred and seven pupil units. If we change it to the way it's going to be in fourteen, fifteen, our pupil units are four thousand, one seventy-seven. They did a lot of simplification. There are many different weighting factors, they pretty much said everybody's a one, except for high school students, seven through twelve, they're all now a one-point-two, rather than have six or seven different weightings. So that would tell us that we'd drop in pupil units, you might think we would drop in revenue then, but what they did is they pretty much held everybody harmless. You can see that the General Education Formula allowance, the first number below those totals, currently it's five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, that's the amount per pupil unit that we get. That was adjusted up to five thousand, eight oh six to accommodate for that drop in the pupil unit calculation, so it's just a math thing, basically. So you can see our general education aid, based on the old weightings, would generate twenty-three million, twenty-two thousand. With the new amount and the new calculations, our aid will go up to twenty-four thousand, two fifty-five. That's an increase of one-point-two million. So out of that one-point-two million, about six hundred and fifty thousand of that is for kindergarten students, because now the kindergarten students are weighted full-time, where they were basically half, a point-six before. And the other six hundred or so thousand is because of the one and a half percent increase each year in the formula loan, so. Just to show you kind of the effect of that new legislation.
Any questions for Colleen?
Just a comment, I just want you to recognize the projection that Colleen made at the beginning of the year in June and what we ended up with, she was off by three students, so congratulations, that was pretty remarkable.
It's much closer than she has any right to be.
Even a scientist couldn't get any closer.
They must have known it was gonna be her birthday, didn't they? All right. Next is the financial report. Any questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none. We have an action item under consider the approval of gifts and donations, so we have one gift this evening to consider. The gift was from the Cathedral of Our Merciful Savior, a memorial for Paula Zetalas. At the Cathedral of the Merciful Savior was used to send all Roosevelt Elementary School fifth grade students to a concert by the St. Paul Chamber Orchestra. Tickets, bus transportation, and lunch was provided for the students. The monetary value was fourteen hundred dollars. To let everyone know so that they understand the context of this gift, Paula Zetalas was a longtime staff member who passed away this past year in our district and was a teacher at Roosevelt Elementary, so I think that was an absolutely wonderful thing to do in her honor. And we thank, thank the Cathedral of Our Merciful Savior for that donation. I will entertain a motion to approve this gift.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next on to item number nine, other committee reports. Onto the Insurance Committee. We have no report from the Insurance Committee, the Wellness Committee has no report tonight. Community Ed and Marie Leland has a report for us.
Hello, thank you so much for all your nice comments earlier tonight, I really appreciate it, I can barely get my head up here at some of these. It feels like my birthday today, not Colleen's, so anyway. No, I really do appreciate that, and I just have to say that it's mainly been because of how you and my boss and other staff in the district and the community has really been open to these ideas, and so it has been a huge collaborative process to get all of the programs together that we've been able to offer, and there will be more to come, so just stay tuned. STEAM is going really well. Ashley did a wonderful job at capturing what's going on in the morning and afternoon at STEAM. The pictures were excellent, so thank you very much. The quotes, that article really reflects too, the collaborative nature of that program. I mean, the, we had all of the quotes from Colleen and Colleen and Margaret and Todd and just all of the community partners have just made such a terrific impact, I believe, very much so, on grades K through eight this summer. So hopefully we'll be able to do that next year as well. So that's my report, I wanted to end with introducing our new McKinley Early Childhood Coordinator, Christine Gorman.
Hello.
She will be starting in July and we're very excited to have her. She's a familiar face in the district and very well credentialed and excited to start, so welcome her, please.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Next on the list, Other Matters. Item A, item ten A, approve the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen middle school handbook and Jefferson Elementary student handbook, you have those in your board packet. Asha, for the question, I'm curious as to why we have these two and not the others at this time.
Yeah, I don't, quite honestly, I don't think the elements are done yet, are they?
I just received Roosevelt's after this agenda was put out, so that'll be on the July, and and then I haven't received the other ones yet, but they should be coming for July.
We can certainly table this, I don't have a problem with that, if you want to get them all in one shot too, that's fine. If you want to look at and compare those.
I, my personal preference is to approve all of them at the same time, so if you can look at them as they can be compared.
Then you look at them and compare them.
So if somebody wanted to make such a motion to table it until the next board meeting, that would be fine.
I move that we table the decision about the middle school and Jefferson School handbooks until such time as we have all of them.
Second. A motion and a second, that's a non-debatable item, so we'll go ahead and and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and we'll be examining those at that, at that date. Item ten B through E, then I want to make a few comments on. Item ten B, Todd and Tom and I, as we were discussing in this meeting last week, came to consensus of choosing, rewording the the title of item B to be approving reinstating all high school activities for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, as opposed to simply reinstating high school boys and girls tennis. We could choose to do any of those if if the board wants to, so it's not meant to reflect that, but that was my recollection from our meeting was that that was a consensus that was starting to hear in the room, so so I thought I would put that on the agenda as to what I understood the consensus is, it does not mean that we can't as a board choose what it is that we want to reinstate. We did not want to do all the activities, we could choose to just do some piece of that if that was our choice, that was the reason for the change there. I will say a few words to the community, I think about this, to, I think we had a long discussion about this at our board work session and that was reported in the paper, but not the entire community is not able to attend those meetings, and so I wanted to say something about those. The context of this discussion previously had been sort of trying to balance these activities versus perhaps some additional technology funds within the district. In very recent days, right before our last work session, became clear that the board may have the option of many changes have been made to the levy situation within the district from from the state legislative session. In light of those, it would be possible for the district to approve some additional revenue for 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 the schools by having a board approved, a small board approved levy. That would create a small amount of That would create a small amount of additional funds, and therefore it may not be necessary to choose between these items. That was my understanding, my feeling from the discussion of where we went. The thought was to, at this meeting, perhaps put back those which had the shorter timeline, being the activities. Items A and B, I'm sorry, items ten B and ten C. And it was also suggested that some board members wanted to consider adding back the Riverbend Nature Center, so that is item C, item D, I'm sorry I misspoke. And then item E was the alternative that we could think about at this time, but I had a sense of the board that we perhaps wanted to wait on item E until we examined, had some more time to examine the possibility of a small board approved levy. So I wanted to make those comments as we get started. So we're on item ten B, I'll, I'll say that I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to discuss items B through E together, they are all interrelated to each other. And I would entertain a motion to approve any combination of them that the motion maker would like to. So if somebody wanted to make a motion, for instance, to approve B, C, and D as in one motion, that would be fine, and then we could open that up, so. Those are my words before we open up the discussion, so I'll open up the discussion at this time.
I'd like to make sure, I'm trying to begin what may be a somewhat of a long process, but the board-approved levy item that we became aware of just before our work session, as I recall, is not an additional levy that would raise our local property taxes. Am I correct so far?
It's, it's kind of complicated, I would, I would argue that.
Like, one reason, maybe now is not the time, but I wanted to get, start getting this information out to the community. My understanding is that it results in basically flat funding, but a larger portion being paid by state funds and a smaller portion being paid by local property tax levy.
You know, I think it would be okay, if you're okay with this, Colleen, just to explain, there's two components to this. There's a local equity index, the two hundred and twelve amount, which helps reduce some property tax. Then there's the three hundred dollar levy, I would argue that the three hundred dollar levy is an increase of the levy. However, when you do the net after adding that levy, it is a tax decrease too, but that's a net tax decrease. And it gets even more complicated because the actual pupil unit changes as a result of, prior to this, the levy was counted with all the students that live in the community. Now, the levy will be counted with only the students that go to fairable public schools with the new pupil weighting system. So for example, before, when we did the three hundred eighty-five dollar levy, that was levied on five thousand students. Now the levy is levied on four thousand students. So as a result, that three hundred eighty-five dollar amount actually changed, this is a legislative change, to four hundred and fifty-four or something like that. So really you have a four hundred and fifty-four dollar levy. Alright, so now from, now if you stick with the four fifty-four and you subtract the two hundred and twelve, which now becomes part levy, and do you know what those percentages are by chance, Colleen? Sorry, putting you on the spot, we have in the paper. But part of it is levy and part of it is state aid, whereas before that full two twelve was almost all levy, a great portion of it is. So that'll lower taxes a little bit, and now you're four fifty-four, what's two twelve minus four fifty-four?
You're the math guy.
Math guys need calculating. Two forty-two?
Two forty-two.
Two forty-two. So the two forty-two is then the current levy theoretically. Well, it is, that's the way statute works, it's rolled in, so now your levy is two forty-two. So now the board has a chance to also roll in a three hundred dollar levy. So, and that again is part state aid, part levy. So that, that levy, that three hundred dollars, we don't lose any of the money of that two hundred and forty-two dollars, but we gain whatever is above and beyond that. So if you take three hundred dollars minus the two forty-two, you get fifty-eight, right?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-eight, fifty-seven dollars, so that's your brand-new levy. So after you do the levy increase and the two twelve, your new levy amount, which used to be three eighty-five, which is really four fifty-four, is now fifty-eight dollars per student. And that's new money, because the other ones are already funded, the other four fifty-four, three eighty-five is already a hundred percent funded. But you have now better, you have property tax relief, and you get in addition fifty-seven dollars times four thousand, which ends up being two hundred and forty thousand. So that's new money that we didn't know that we're getting, but that only works if the board approves the three hundred dollar levy. We call it a board-approved levy, which actually reduces taxes. So it's a little bit different, because it doesn't go this way, it really kind of goes down this way. So that's my best shot at it, I don't know, Colleen, you want to add?
Well, I've, I've been struggling since last week to, to understand this, but in my terms, if we, if we go with the three hundred dollars small.
Board levy, board-approved levy.
We end up lowering local property taxes while ending up with an additional two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in the budget.
That's correct.
Okay, so if that action were taken, we lower property taxes but increase revenue for the district.
Yeah, it's a little bit different than, you think of a board-approved levy out there, an increase in the dollar amount. This one actually allows you to roll in so that the state comes up with the dollars and the local taxpayers don't. Well, they still come up with some of it, but it's not like it was before, so.
Well, I suspect that this may be an ongoing discussion for some time, but I wanted to, because it sounded so.
It's complicated.
Yes, but I think as it's, as I've been looking at it, it seems to accomplish two things. Lowering our local property taxes while generating additional funds for our district.
And I think that's important background information, and we'll be discussing it further. That'll be on our agendas for both July meetings that we have planned at this time, so we'll have further discussion on that. To be clear, that, that approval of that levy is not on the agenda for this evening, so we're not considering it for approval, but I thank you, Tom, I think that's very good background information, the sooner we begin to talk about it.
And just one last comment too, if the board chooses not to approve the three hundred dollar levy, then in a sense what you've done is you've, you've said, we're not going to approve a tax decrease, because it truly is a tax decrease, because you're lowering the levy amount. You're asking the state to pay more, and of course that has to come from somewhere, comes from a different contingency. But locally, your local taxpayers, if they don't fall within those parameters, would pay less.
So we are back to considering the items in front of us this evening, the items that we are, the last items, we are thinking about reinstating reductions in our cut list, I guess is how I would phrase them. We have a cut list, and this reduces the number of things that will appear on that, that cut list for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I'd like to move that we approve B, C, and D, reinstating high school boys and girls tennis, reinstating the middle.
Hold on, just to clarify, item B was rewritten to be all high school activities, so you can choose to, just to.
B is all of those, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, so, so what B says here and what B says here are two different things, and so you would need to choose which one you want to.
So if I choose this B, that includes the tennis, includes the nature center?
Uh, no, this includes.
Just high school.
All high school activities.
Including tennis.
Which also has tennis, yeah.
If you want me to, I've got them listed, if you want me to read them to you. Do you want me to reread them to you what those high school activities were?
Probably be good for the audience.
They were, when the board made the decision last November, or September, November, the items that were cut at the high school were pep band, marching band, the echo, the science team, math team, prom coordinator, girls' and boys' tennis, student council advisor, National Honor Society, and link crew. And that total dollar amount was, I can't see, thirty, thirty-three thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars.
So we interrupt your motion, I'm sorry. You want to restate your motion, I think.
Okay, so, so what you were saying here is B and C are together now, is B?
Nope, B just has new wording.
Okay, so I move that we approve B and D, the nature center.
Well, I think you intended to approve.
And middle schooling activities, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying, no.
So I'll, I'll restate the motion, just for clarification. You can correct me if I'm wrong, as I understand the motion, the motion is to approve reinstating high school activities, item B, approve reinstating middle school activities, item C, and approve reinstating Riverbend Nature Center contract.
That's correct.
That, that's the motion in front of us?
Yes.
Alright, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve those items, any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was there some fundraising on some of these items, like tennis?
There was, yeah.
And there could be others, there was, what, what happens with that?
The, if the board approves all those and they want to support the cost, then the money has been pledged, it hasn't been actually collected to the school district, then we would just tell them, the person or the entity that's collecting money, just to give the money back, or if they want to use it something else, they can go ahead and use it for something else.
Sort of like the automotive center?
Yep.
Or the automotive program?
Yep.
But they gave some of that money to buy.
Equipment.
Equipment, so. So they still could raise money, donate the money for whatever, right?
Absolutely.
You bet.
I'm certain we can find new things for, for those pledges if they choose to do so.
Probably do a scholarship too.
Yeah. Alright, we have a motion, was there a second?
Yes, there was.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Next item is item ten D then. And we want to handle that at this time.
Ten E?
Ten D, we have not actually acted on ten.
E.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, thank you for correcting me, item ten E, I misspoke. Uh, item ten E, the addition of the technology plan, is there action at this time, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to move that we table this item until we are able to see, sometime in the fairly near future, but see how this will fit in with the overall idea of a possible digital learning levy and, and other issues, and I just believe that if we were to look at it now, it might be a little premature.
Second.
Is there a second? Alright, we have a motion, this item is not debatable, this motion to table, you're tabling until when, clarify.
Be the regular July more, I think it goes on the.
Regular July, when, when, during the discussions of a possible digital learning levy, as I've heard it termed here in recent discussions.
Alright, so, we have a motion to table, it is not debatable.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cook, please, roll call.
I'm gonna vote no, Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Cherry Robishaw?
No.
And Mr. England?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the vote is forty-two, three, forty-two.
Four, right. Forty-two, forty-two, thank you very much, Mr. Cook. Next up, item ten F, approve scheduling a special work, actually before we do that, I just want to add a little commentary. I heard sort of this disturbing discussion today that came through me through the grapevine, which is members of our community sort of commenting that, uh, that the district in fact was adding back all the things that we said we would cut earlier on, and I just would like to clarify that that is in fact unfortunately not the case. As I think Tom pointed out earlier, even with the additions we just talked about here, we had originally talked about cutting one point seven million from the district. We are still cutting roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the district. And that, those cuts are dearly felt, those are teachers within our districts, particularly at the elementary schools. Nine teachers' classroom sizes there will be greatly affected. So, while I think we are fortunate at this time to be able to talk about reducing the, the effects of budgetary cuts, I, I don't want anyone to think that in fact the cuts that have taken place are not, not very serious, because they unfortunately are. Okay, next up, item ten F. Approve scheduling a special work session for Monday, July fifteenth at five thirty P M at the District Office Board Conference Room. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just state for those who might be watching that the, the idea of that work session is for the board to examine closely a levy that will be, at this time, that's the only thing planned for the agenda as far as to talk about potential levy plans moving forward, so that's what we can expect to talk about at that work session, and why it's being scheduled at this time. Alright, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Item eleven, other items of information, we have a student representative with us this evening. Items of information from school board members. Let's add that Colleen Murdestorff turns thirty-nine. Happy birthday, I am so sorry that.
I think you promised to sing happy birthday.
I did promise, if I can get joined, I'll do it. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Colleen, happy birthday to you.
She's looking at me saying.
I am certain that made the waiting the hour not, this meeting was completely worth it.
The best waiting you've ever had.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I attended, um, Yvette and I, the graduation and the CREC, the step, it was about eight students, it was great. It's a great time, I had a great time, great students.
Alright, Mr. Superintendent, do you?
Sure, I have a couple things, I met with Dr. Parker from South Central College, she's the new president for South Central College, both Mankato and Fairable campus, and she has some exciting ideas, particularly with the automotive piece. I'm actually going to attend a conference with her in Kenosha, Wisconsin in July, so that's exciting. I not only attended the CREC graduation, but I also went to the MSAD and the MSAB graduations, and they were done very, very well. Congratulations again, another one to Anne Marie, I don't want to get her head too big here, but yeah. She did graduate from the Fairable Futures class, so congratulations, that was terrific, and we had a nice celebration last week. So we're gonna look to see if we can find somebody else to go this next year, it's a great experience night. We'll go ahead and take a look and see who we may have. I competed in the Bruce Smith Open, didn't golf very well, but had a very good time, so we, we had a good time, I, I know Howard did too, so that was a wonderful time, and a really cool collaboration between the different schools in town with their athletic programs, between the academies and VA and, and fairable public schools. Also was on KDHL a week ago, and Gordy always does a great job of the interview. I just kind of listened to his questions and spit it out, he does a very good job of helping me through this piece. I also was part of the AAC, this is the board, the advisory board for the Southeast Service Co-op. I had my last meeting down there, so that's one last trip that I have to take, so it was a good four years I was on that board, so I'm also very happy to get off that board too, but it was a good experience. And I just came back also, Keith Stover retired today, and I went to his retirement party, and it was very nice, and just want to congratulate President Stover on all he has accomplished in this community and the dedication he's shown for fairable, South, fairable campus, South Central College, and congratulations to him. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. to him. And that's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman.
It's out of order.
I was a little bit, but I still say something. I saw the article on the trap shooting in the paper, and I think we had kudos to Peter Jacobson for volunteer coaching that-
Absolutely.
-trap team. A great, a great turnout from our school. It was impressive.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Finally, dates to remember. July fifteenth, at seven-thirty AM will be the Finance Committee meeting in the District Office. July fifteenth, at five-thirty PM will be our special work session at the District Office. July twenty-second, at four-forty-five will be the Curriculum Committee meeting in the District Office in July twenty-second, six-thirty PM will be our regular board meeting right back here at City Hall Council Chambers. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.